All right, I'm calling this meeting back to the order of the Sacramento City Unified School District. Do we have any announcements taken in closed session?
Good evening, President Pritchett, there are no announcements.
Okay, and so before we get to our Board Governance Workshop, we have two public comments. Yes, our first speaker is Mo Cashmary. Mo, you are muted. Mo, you are still muted, can you please unmute yourself? Ms. Mertesacker, do we have our next speaker, or we can get back to Mo? Okay, our next speaker is Terrence Gladney. Good evening, Terrence, you are on mute as well. Terrence, are you there? Okay, maybe they walked away, or we're having issues. Can we maybe get back to Mo to see if he is on now? Mo, are you there? You are muted. Okay, all right, sorry about that, guys, I'm not sure what is going on, we're gonna move on to our Governance Section, welcome, Teri V. Hill.
Hi, hello, hello, so, thank you Board of Trustees for having me back in your beautiful school district, I'm excited to work with you guys. What we're gonna do this evening is just hit the high points, I made a draft of a Governance Handbook. We're gonna go over this together very quickly, and then I'll send the handbook back to you, and you can do your edits, and make sure that I captured the content correctly for you, and then you adopt it in an open board meeting, so we'll get started. Does everyone have their copy of the draft? Okay, all right. Good evening Superintendent, nice to see you. Okay, here we go, all right, so, page one, Draft, this is when I created it, 810, it has a list of the Board of Trustees, really, why do we make a handbook? It's, one, for, it's a good way to onboard new trustees to your team, and also, it's an agreement of the way you guys do business, so it's a good way to hold each other accountable. The Handbook reflects the Governance Teamwork on Creation of a Framework for Effective Governance. This involves ongoing discussions about Unity of Purpose, Roles, Norms, and coming to agreement on Protocols for Formal Structures that enable the Governance Team to continue to perform its responsibilities in a way that best benefits all children. Going to page two, I got your vision, so the SCUSD, Core Value, Equity, Access, and Social Justice Guiding Principle, and Theory of Change. I really like the, I like all of it, actually, but the first one is very impactful. We recognize that our system is inequitable by design, and we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and reach their greatness. And then the statement underneath is Equity, Access, and Social Justice Guiding Principles. All students are given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of co-secondary choices from the widest array of options. And then we have the Theory of Change, the integration of the LCAP, SPSA, and budget is critical to implement the Equity, Access, and Social Justice Guiding Principles. Very good, going to page three, what does SCUSD stand for? And here's a list of the core beliefs. I'm gonna give you guys a second just to browse those, and see if there's anything that you would like to edit on that page. I'll read them while you're going over them, trustee McCowsky? Or Maraski, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I don't have my glasses on again, remember you guys, I can't see if I did.
Teri, it's the very first time that's ever happened.
I'm so sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify or understand where these come from? Are these pulled out of our board policies?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Got it, thank you.
Yes ma'am, so I'll read them really quick while you guys look through them, our core beliefs, we believe that all students will learn at high levels when instruction meets their needs. We believe that all people are inspired by high standards and challenging goals. We believe that all people thrive in a setting that respects their individual contributions and diversity of perspectives they bring to achieving common goals. We believe that all people give their best in a culture that promotes trust, encourages risk-taking, and celebrates success. We believe that all people excel in an environment that is safe and offers everyone unlimited opportunities for continuous growth and personal success. We believe that all people value open, honest, and timely communication and collaboration. We believe all people want to be held accountable and rewarded for their contribution to the attainment of common goals. We believe that the social, economic, and cultural diversity of our community is a source of strength for our school system, and this is a policy from Sacramento City Unified School District. Any changes or edits, or?
Member Garcia, and before we move on to the second page of this, Teri, we have our public comments.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Member Garcia. Do you wanna get the public comment first, okay, sorry, we'll get the public comment.
Mo Cashmary?
Okay, go ahead, Mo, go ahead, unmute yourself. All right, can we try Terrence Gladney? Terrence, if you can hear us, please unmute yourself.
Still nothing.
They can hear, okay. Terrence, are you there? Would you like to unmute yourself? We will continue moving on, sorry for the delay. Go ahead, Member Garcia.
So, towards, I think it's the, we believe that all people want to be held accountable and rewarded. I think we should put in there, like, we believe that all people should be held accountable. I just think it maybe elevates.
It elevates the, I don't know, the accountability piece? So, we believe that all people should be held accountable and rewarded for their contribution to the attainment of common goals. And then, the following one, on the diversity, I think we can expand the categories, I guess? Social, economic, cultural, maybe gender diversity, just, I think, to be more inclusive, we can add others. I just, I just thought that it seemed a little limited, and then we've recently passed resolutions that are a lot more inclusive. So I just wanted to make sure that it reflected some of our more recent actions, but I, you know, welcome comments from my colleagues to see how we can further strengthen those, that language, thank you.
Member Phillips?
I do like the, the part about beefing up the social, economic, cultural, yada, yada, but I do think that all people want to be held accountable. I think "should" puts us in a position as to where we might be forcing people to be held accountable. I think it's, it falls into that situation where kids need structure, or they want structure, they may not know it, and it's harder to enforce when you push the "should" on them, that's just me. If everybody else agrees on the "should," fine, but I, I think that "want" is, is there because that's, that's the drive of the people. They want to be held accountable, but they, if you say they should be held accountable, it's a, I don't know, it just sounds a bit more oppressive to me. Yeah.
How about "will be held accountable"?
That's even worse. I mean, like I said, it's, we're talking about this in a very, very positive light, all of this is extremely positive. We believe people are inspired, we believe that people thrive, so we just wanna make sure that we keep it on that, that level, so. But, in terms of beefing up the social, economic, and cultural diversity of our community, I don't have much to say about that, because I, I'm not 100% sure that these particular items are a strength in our school system, because some of that stuff is actually bringing us down, too. So, you know, there are higher-level issues that this kinda skirts around, but I get it. This is supposed to be happy.
Do you have recommended language?
Not 100%, because if I think about it, I would, I would make it as simple as possible. Like, we believe that, you know, the humanity of our community, even specifically, we just believe that our community is a source of strength for our school system, or our community, so. I mean, does that make it bigger and more inclusive by saying "our communities," or do we need to add the actual community names, so to speak? That's, that's my, my thought, I would take all that out, so, social, economic, cultural diversity, because it will be asked to explain what diversity is, and whether we understand what that is. We're working on that.
Member Rhodes?
Thank you, as Member Phillips was saying, one of the things I think, when, I would, I wouldn't want to necessarily take out individual groups, I do understand the general going on and making sure that, when we say that we, we, we feel, we believe that this is an asset to our community, and opposed to what actually happens in the community, to where sometimes it's viewed as we don't actually appreciate those things in, in our school district. But going back to our core value, I think that our core value is, is the reason why our core value is not in our core beliefs? The core value of, we recognize that our system is inequitable by design, and we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exists, that exist to level the playing field. Should that not be in our, we also believe this, or is that just like our value? And is it because we state it as our core value, that it's not in our, or I guess our beliefs? Now, this is my question, like, is that, is that why that that's not there? Because it's already touched on as the core of what we do as a district, or what we believe as a district?
Go ahead, Member Phillips.
I'm looking for.
Yeah, this is, can be open dialogue, as long as we're not talking over each other, then I'll put a stop.
I'll be nice, I understand what you're saying on that, so, if, I would read this differently, though, because, maybe the reason we're not including it in our beliefs is because the core value is not strong enough in ways that we recognize the system. Do we recognize it as inequitable, or do we recognize it as the systemic type of issues that have brought this district, or districts like this, or many districts, or education in general in America to be, to be inequitable? So, I, I'm that kinda person who wants to call a spade a spade, and if we talk about inequitable, we wanna think about why, or what causes that inequability, if that's the word, inequity? Maybe I'll get in trouble for saying it, I doubt it, it really is real, we're talking about systemic racism, we're talking about how that is built into the schools, and the districts, and how we are working to combat that, but we have to call it what it is first before we start working on it. So, you know, it's, it's flowery language, inequitable was a beautiful word, but, you know, if we really truly believe that our system is set up a certain way, we need to talk about that like it really is, so. Would we be the first school district ever to mention that our, our system is based in systemic racism? I hope not, but I would like to be very clear about how I feel about that, and, and I hope that other folks kinda agree.
I think, I think that it's very true, yes, my, the mic's off. I think that it's very true that our syst, the system that we actually operate in, you know, sometimes, I said before, where education and inequity share the same surname, for instance, so, in a lot, in a lot of cases, when we talk about racial justice and social justice work inside of what we do as a district, I would believe that that statement here, as our core value, is touching on that, right, and then, our core beliefs, when we try to, when we try to go into the diversity, socioeconomic and cultural diversity, is trying to call that out, but, what I, my question is, is, how do we, how are we connecting those two things in this, in this document? And that's, that's what I was, I guess I was trying to ask.
And, and, Teri, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, the core value, or the, our vision, and the core beliefs are, would be like a whole nother meeting, right, if we're not part of this, correct?
Yeah, if we wanted to change the language deeply.
Yeah, it would be an entire workshop.
But, if, you know, you just wanted to change a few words now, I could definitely do that. And again, I'm going to edit the content, we're gonna edit the content this evening, and I'll send it back to you, and you're still able to make edits after that, before you adopt it at a regular board meeting.
This is great dialogue, by the way, this FY. We can definitely go through the packet, I know that we're going to have opportunity to write our notes and things like that, but I think that it is important, as we, as we dig deep and we go into our governance journey, that we have this, this space currently to have a dialogue that we even don't have, and to go have it openly around these things would be great, so if we could come back and actually dive into this a little bit deeper, that'd be great, for the time that we have today, let's, let's go through this, and then write our notes and come back, but I look forward to, like, having a deeper conversation around these things.
Okay, so you wanna take a note for that? We recognize that our system is steeped in systemic racism, by, and then I guess we could say by design, or steeped by design. We recognize that our system is by design steeped in systemic racism.
Oh, gosh, okay, we're talking core value now.
Yeah, we were on the values, sorry.
No, that's okay, I think it's worth, I think it's worth, like, Member Rhodes said, coming back to that, because that's, we need to go deep.
Yeah, it's gonna take a, a whole workshop to go over our values and beliefs.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I look forward to it, I hope I'm here.
I just wanna be on record, say I support, support that conversation.
And then can we formally ask, bring that back to the board?
Yes.
I'm formally asking to bring that back to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could just say, on this, these core beliefs, I just, I wanna say the first one and the last one, I, I like. The, all the stuff in the middle, I, I could scrap for the purposes of this document. I just think it's a lot of things that are true about, you know, or that, some of them, we hope are true, or we would want to be true, and maybe they're, maybe they're not actually 100%. I, I don't know if I believe that all people are inspired by high standards and challenging goals. Most people are, many people are, right, I mean, can we say 100% certainty that every single person is inspired by? You know, it's just, it doesn't really add a whole lot to me, to, to make, I guess, you know, it's, they're kinda flowery statements, right, about, but I think the first one that says, we believe all students will learn at high levels when instruction meets their needs. We believe that diversity, however you wanna phrase it here, is, in our community is a source of strength, I think that's important to say. And, something, you know, I would say something about, about accountability, that we, you know, everyone in our system, I don't think we need to say "all people," you know, everyone employed by, or everyone, every adult in the Sacramento City Unified District System should be accountable to the needs of students, or something like, you know, something along those lines, I think is, is more, along the lines of what we, is real to us, and what our conversations usually are about.
Do you think we could just remove the word "all" from a lot of those statements?
I think we should, I, I honestly, we could tweak them, but I just don't know what they add to this particular document. So, that's, I just wanted to say that. This is not, I mean, these don't seem like core beliefs to me, these seem like, maybe beliefs, but not core beliefs, I don't know.
These, these, it's on. These core beliefs are aspirational, aren't they? So we would want everybody, hopefully, to subscribe to them. If one or two don't subscribe, that's okay, but I, I think, yeah, it's aspirational, we wanna keep all of it in.
I think it's discriminatory if you're gonna put all that in there. Taking it out makes sense, because we really should be at our core belief, at the center of that, talking about what we're actually offering. Our belief is what we offer to our students, so, are we offering high standards and challenging goals? Maybe it falls into that category, instead of, we believe that these things are what applies to making super duper successful students, so.
And, Teri, we're, just, just, just for clarity for me, we are, this is like a first read, right? And then, and then we're going to be able to get notes, send those notes in, and then have a revision about that before we approve any of this, right?
Exactly, exactly, and we can also, you don't have to include your core beliefs in the Governance Handbook, we could take that out and work at, work on that at another time, if you wish to, okay? Okay, all right, so, we will work on that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get dates from you guys tonight, too.
Just moving forward, it would be helpful to know what a core belief is. Like, what is the definition of a core belief, so that we can start thinking about it in that context?
Okay.
Like, we kinda got two separate, like, what, what the perception of a core belief is.
Okay.
And I feel like we may have different perceptions.
Okay.
Yeah, if we don't all feel strongly about it, and we don't know what it is, then it doesn't belong in the thing, right?
Right, yeah, okay.
Roles and responsibilities?
Yes, roles and responsibilities, page four. So, there are really five responsibilities that we do as Board Trustees. One, we set the direction, two, we establish the structure, three, we provide support, four, we ensure accountability, and five, we serve as community leaders. And I'm not gonna read through page four and five, but that's just diving deeper in each of those five areas and defining it. Is there any questions or comments on that?
When I was reading this, I was just trying to maybe crystallize it for, for me, like, we set the direction, it's just kind of like out there, like, what direction, right? I just felt, is it the strategic direction, is it the vision, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, like, what direction means? And the same thing, we establish the structure, like, what, I feel like it's missing context, like, all of these. Provide the support, we ensure accountability, just thought, well, maybe it's oversight and accountability, and then we serve as, as community leaders, liaisons, et cetera. So I'm just trying to figure out what the context is, because I just felt like a lot of it was just kinda leaving me halfway towards, like, what we wanna say, but I don't know if it was just me.
Did you feel that way even with the, down below, the explanation of what each bullet was?
The Board of Trustees.
Yes, it's like, the first one sets the direction, and then it gives, like, five, five bullets of what that direction is, and then the same thing for establish as an effective and efficient structure.
Well, those were a little bit more, just clear, I, I just felt like these roles and responsibilities were a little too vague.
It's just an explanation down below.
I think it goes deep into the explanations, it's like, it's like, um, what do they call, at the beginning of the book, you get to read where, okay, this is gonna be on this page, we set directions on page five, okay, and this down there, so, it's kinda like a syllabus, in a way, and then goes deep into it, I think it goes, I mean, if we want to, we can go over each one of these, but I believe that it goes into each area, but, Member Garcia, are you asking to have it more spelled out, and have it less, like, like, less pages of all of this? Should it be like a one pager, or?
So, I just feel like the first part is lacking in context, and maybe the second part is just, like, overcorrects. So I just, I'm trying to find a balance, where it's not too wordy, it provides enough specificity, but not so much.
So maybe taking out that top section, and just starting it with the bottom sections, because it's pretty much the same thing, but without the bullets on the top.
I think that's open for discussion, I mean, that was just my general, like, my initial impression.
What other?
I think just taking out maybe the one through five, but keeping the explanation of, here's what our roles are, here's the superintendent, but just.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Along with the role of trustees is to stay focused, yada, 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 because five responsibilities are described below. So I, roles.
I could make a comment on just the, you know, the bullets, I think they're, I think they're good, you know, I think where we could add a little more specificity to what we do is, is helpful, like, focusing on student learning. Like, what does that mean, you know, how do we do that? Like, even if we said, for example, you know, requesting regular reports on student data, or, I don't know, I just think it's, maybe, maybe that will make it too wordy, too, but, I just think, you know, because this stuff is very, this stuff is very good, roles and responsibilities, to what is governance, and what is management and administration, and I think this is really foundational to understanding our role, and like, what, this is our job, basically, this is our job description right here, these five things, right? So, I think that the more we can really understand what those different pieces are, the more we can, you know, sink our teeth into, like, we set the direction for the community schools by assessing district needs, like, does anyone know what that means? How do we do that? Like, so, where we can, where we can make this more real, like, okay, generating, reviewing, and revising, direction-setting documents, beliefs, vision, priorities, okay, that makes sense, that's a, you know, that's a tangible thing. I just think that the things in here. I just think that the things in here, to the extent we can make them more tangible and connect them with our practices, will will help us understand, you know, our job description better.
And this again will be public?
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that this is written in a manner so that our public can also read this and understand it.
Yeah, but it's not the core. I think the core reason for this is to have an agreement among ourselves as to what we agree to. But yeah, I think it should be readable.
So let's make it readable for me. Let's do it for me.
Yeah, because I was going to say, I mean, yes, I agree with with that. But we also have to remember that this is a document for us, like you said, and it's not a document for the public, just like board meetings are not a public meeting, but a meeting for the board. And so.
But you want your board members to be able to understand this.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Can't understand it, then it makes sense for us to make it so that at least one of your board members, who might be at the lower echelons, being able to understand all this wordiness, would say, now I understand it. Start with roles and responsibilities and write this stuff in fifth grade, fifth grade English.
Do you have suggested language that's?
If I make my suggestions, I would take out the entire roles and responsibilities section, all the way down to roles and responsibilities, something that explains.
Take out one through five.
Not just one through five, the entire block of text. Because the superintendent is hired by the school board to provide professional expertise in the day-to-day management of the district. We're explaining that already. So we don't necessarily need to say the superintendent assists the board in carrying out its responsibilities, other than the fact that we know that he's hired to do that. So I'm just, just, you know, cutting it down, it's like.
So just take out. Take out everything above the line.
Everything above the line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is everyone in agreement?
Yeah, and I think that, I think that this document, and when I, when I read through it and I visualized what it was for, it's not necessarily for the person, but for the position, right? So rather, you, you, or any of us here, this document should be able to go to any trustee, and the trustee, the position of trustee, would get a better understanding of what their role is.
Yes.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
So.
Or anybody interested in becoming a trustee.
That's a great.
Or, yeah, and all of the above. And so we, this is a very clear job description, as Maroski was saying, but that's how I think of it. So I, in a lot of the stuff that we do, I try to take out the person and think of the position and say, like, what are we building for? Is this the person, the position? And I think that this is for the position, and I just want to just, is that what we're doing? Are we clear on that as a group? Like, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Are we?
Yeah, I agree.
And I also want to add to that, I think it's important that we look at this. If we're talking about a job description, if you were to apply for a job, they're not giving you every detailed bullet point of the job. It's a high-level document that needs to be fluid, but it's, I think it's, we don't want to go down into the weeds of all of the document. It's really important to keep it.
And putting it in a box, so, yeah. Okay, so we're all in agreement that we'll take everything out from the line above, correct?
Got it.
Okay, so then we start with the roles and responsibilities down below.
And then also, just for clarity for me again, today is the first read, and we get to write our notes.
That is correct.
Vote on this. Okay.
Yes, this is going to, this is part of our governance journey, of starting through this.
We don't necessarily have to make all of these decisions today. We can actually send in our recommendations at a prior date as well to for any changes on this document. Yes?
Well, I want to have consensus on the changes. So I'd like you guys to talk about it collaboratively together and make those decisions together.
Because the next time we'll be adopting this, yes, our next meeting, we'll be adopting it.
That's why I want to be clear what we're.
Yeah.
Exactly. And it might be a couple meetings before we get all the content.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, let me just say for the record, you know, this is the job description. I think maybe it's where we come back to this is in our, like a board self-assessment of how are we doing? These are the things that we're measuring against, like, are we doing these things? And how well are we doing them? Do we have appropriate structures to be doing them all? So I think, anyway, that doesn't need to be in here, is what I'm saying. I think we can come back to this, but this is something that we should come back to to measure how we're doing our job.
That definitely needs to be in the toolbox that we've talked about, that we build.
And it needs to be understandable. It needs, I'm just, I'm just speaking from the perspective of, you know, say, your special education benefit, or I guess somebody who got benefit from special education services is now sitting on your board going, I don't know how much of this I understand, because it's written like this. You know what I mean? It just needs to be like this. So that we can understand it. I could tell you if I were looking at this, assessing district needs, who truly assesses those? Do we get that information from the staff? Is that assessment done by staff? And then it comes to us? Our job is to agree or not agree with the assessments made. So I.
We absolutely do assess it when we get our reports from the staff at every single board meeting. That is our assessment.
That assessment is made by someone else, or we make that assessment.
We vote on those assessments, those are made by us.
I know, but.
Because it's not our job to assess. We are board members, we are not staff, but it's not our job to do the reports of assessing.
Therefore, Board of Trustees sets a direction for the community schools by assessing district needs. We don't do that. We hear those needs and we hear those assessments, and then we make decisions based on what we've heard.
Absolutely true.
I also think, I also think that there's different forms of assessing. And so I think that, you know, how we interact with our community, how we hear from the community and handle direct assessments that staff members also don't receive. And so in taking those assessments in, in thought while they give us their structural assessment, right, that we're able to take a community assessment, and then we layer those things to say, what's the best decision moving forward for our, for our community? The district's going to give us, this is what's good for students in district, and then we go, okay, and this is what we've been hearing assessing, and we layer those two things, and then we make an informed decision, a holistic decision on what's best for our general population, our students and families and staff members.
I think that's absolutely right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely right.
I guess that brings me back to like, making these more, like, if we said assessing district needs by interacting with the community, receiving reports from the district, and putting all these things together, you know what I mean? That would be meaningful. When it just says assessing district needs, to me, it falls a little flat, because. Yeah, so maybe.
Would it put us too much in a box of like, these are the only things that we can assess then? Because I would not like that. I mean, I wouldn't want like a new board member or someone to just read this and say, oh, this is all I can do, because it's written in black and white.
Maybe like, it's more of a, to me, it's more of a for example, right?
It could be a for example, yeah.
And it's dynamic anyway, so there will be changes to it, and it won't necessarily stay this way, correct? This isn't going to be static. Things are going to change, just like we're sitting here now, having a conversation about all of this. I would assume that this should be something that is not going to be static.
Sure, I'm sure that this will change over the years. I can't remember the last time, Amber, who that we, it's been a long time since we've gone over this with the board and updated a governance handbook.
And that's what we, we suggest that you go over it one time a year and make your changes and redo the agreement that you agreed to do business by the governance handbook.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea.
So why don't we, as a next step on this, maybe we just read it over carefully and just highlight anything that we think is just, doesn't really make sense or doesn't really explain what the job is? And then, you know, and then communicate that to Terry, so maybe she can find something more clear. To talk, does that make sense to folks?
Do you guys have changes from the first read of? No? All right, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. So I'll be looking for those changes. And like I said, I can integrate those changes, and then you guys can look at it as a team and see if you agree with the changes. So you're not held by my change of the content or my understanding of the content.
Yeah, and under such traction, we can add the for example.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so I will work on that with your help. Now we'll go to page six, and I always like to put in board bylaw 9,59200. So it gives a, and remember, this is used as an onboarding tool for your new trustees. So it just gives them an understanding of a couple really important board bylaws. If you're in agreement to that, I'll include those. If you don't want them in there, I will exclude them.
I think it's a good idea to include them. That way it's a comprehensive sort of set of information for a new board member.
Thank you. In agreement?
Yes.
Okay, going to page seven, we're going to talk about our governance norms, and what are governance norms? Culture is the positive or negative atmosphere created by the way people in our organization treat each other. Teams have unwritten, implicit, or written, explicit agreements about how they will behave with each other and others. These behavioral ground rules, often called norms, enable teams to build and maintain a positive culture or shift a negative one. So I have, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine bullets here, and I'd like to just have you look over those, see if there's any you would like to throw out, change the language with. If you go to page eight, the bottom of page eight, and the top of page nine, you have some working norms already adopted. And I just thought that maybe you'd be interested in adding a couple of these to your adopted norms. So I'll give you a sec to browse through those. And again, your adopted norms are on the bottom of page eight and the top of page nine. And a couple of these are in both places. Like, number one, keep our focus on the best interest of our students. And on number one of your adopted norms, keep the district focused on learning and achievement for all students, so they have similar language.
I'm sorry, Terry, can you repeat what is on page eight versus page seven?
Okay, so seven are just some that I suggested. Number, and if you go to page eight, the bottom of page eight and the top of page nine, those are your adopted norms. So we could either stick with the ones you have adopted on the bottom of page eight and the top of page nine, or we could add a couple from page seven, whatever you wish to do.
What is on the top of page eight?
The top of page eight, we're going to get to that after we finish, finish the norms, I'm sorry. And a lot of times with the, with the governance norms, with the, with the norms that we create together, they're laminated and they're at the dais, you know, just as a reminder for the board of, you know, how we do business, or they're posted somewhere in the boardroom.
I like to hear what my colleagues think, but I think we could probably take some of these that are on page eight, nine, and incorporate them into page seven. And some of it I see right off the bat are like, number six, take collective responsibility for board's performance. And I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks, they added the words, and keep each other accountable. You have to keep each other, all seven of us, keep each other accountable. And number seven, adding, taking that whole sentence periodically evaluated its own effectiveness. I don't think they saw that over on page seven, so maybe adding that to page seven?
Is everyone okay with that?
And what I could do is integrate the two pieces and then send it back to you, and you can edit then also.
Maybe that would be helpful, yeah.
But if there's something that you really object to or you don't see there, please tell me, so I can make that addition.
That would be helpful to see sort of how, like the overlap, because I think there's some similarities.
Yes, there is.
And so we can identify maybe the gaps or the voids.
Okay.
You know, in terms of the periodically evaluate its own effectiveness, I would like to change that to annually evaluate.
Yeah.
Because I think periodically, that's just not.
It's softer.
Well, it's just, there's no time commitment, right? I just think it needs to be an annual evaluation, just like we evaluate the superintendent every year, right? We should evaluate ourselves every year.
Agreed. That's good language.
We could, we could say evaluate ourselves every August, or, you know, I mean, we're talking about accountability, and this is for us. This is all we're doing this for is for us to work together. So we can, I mean, I'd be fine with being that specific.
I think annually. Yeah. It could, it could be that not when the year is over, it could be mid-year. It could be at the beginning of the year, it could be during the summer.
I just think, similar to assessments, you know, we need to, I think, in an annual evaluation and then revisit it on a more regular basis to just kind of continue to measure ourselves towards reaching our goals, right?
I agree.
And so I don't know if that's quarterly, I don't know if that's too frequent. I don't know, but I think there has to be something in between the year. Otherwise, we're always looking back. Right.
You're not, your mic's not on, I don't think.
And you could do it, and so the way C S B A does the board of self-evaluation is we send you a form that has six sections and about five to seven questions on, not job descriptions, but what you've done for the year, and you rate each section from one to five. And then we go over it collaboratively, we look at where you're low, where you're high, we celebrate the successes, and we talk about successes for the challenges.
Okay, I think bullet points, one, two, three, four, five. Five and six, the ones that say on page seven, be supportive around judgmental and discuss issues and not personalities. I would rather not have them in there, because those are things that we might be working on. Not, I guess it's, I don't know, it seems as if maybe we have a problem with that, and that's why it's in there.
What part do you read, page?
Page seven, bullet five and six.
Oh, I think, thank you.
And this is not pointed at you at all or at your team. It's just some of the more common norms. common norms in governance handbooks.
We can also just flip it because I do, I did point out, I did make a note that it gives me like a negative connotation.
Okay.
We can, I think we can, the way I changed it was be supportive of each other and then focus discussion on issues. Just not mention and not personalities, I think it draws attention to, oh, there's a problem, where we can just focus, sterilize it and just be more direct.
Tessie Garcia, how did you discuss issues and then what was the rest of that idea?
Oh, just strike and not personalities.
Okay.
Yeah. Focus discussion on issues and then be supportive of each other as opposed to be supportive rather than judgmental.
Member Phillips, did that cover your?
Yeah.
I also, number five on page nine, government board adopted policies and procedures. I think it's maybe something to put into, we agree to.
Okay.
Because that is, again, back to our role, we are here to govern in the policies and procedures that are adopted for our district.
Okay.
And again, this is moving forward, not just this board, but in the future, you agree to work on policies.
That was a good reflection, thank you. Any other reflections on the norms? And like I said, I can take your suggestions, integrate them together and send it back to you.
No, okay. Oh, I did have one, sorry. There was something about communicate a common vision.
Is this on page seven?
Yeah.
On page eight? Oh, number two?
Yeah. I mean, I like that, I like that concept, not about the specific words, we usually talk about speaking with a common voice.
Okay. Would you like to change it to that? Communicate with a common voice and vision? I mean, you could integrate both of those together or?
I think vision and voice are different things. I think that we can have a clear vision of where we want to be, but have different differences of opinions on how to get there and that's a healthy conversation to have. So I think vision is still good and then it goes back to like, you know, discuss the issues, right? And support each other and so over focus on those things. Then the common vision, focus on a common vision as we get to that vision, right? It still, I think it still works. But once again, continuing to the conversation.
So what came to mind was a common message as opposed to voice, because I think voice means somebody loses their voice, right? Their point of view, so I just think that if we keep it to a common message and then we all communicate that common message.
Yeah.
So I just, because I think.
Yeah, and I don't know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just think there's a difference and I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, promoting somebody's voice to be diminished in somewhere or somebody feel like they don't have a voice, where the real focus, the common, I guess, communication is about the message.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right. I was just looking through to see maybe if it was somewhere else, but like one of the, one of the big things about governance is that issue of we as a board, like, and you know, we don't like individually speak for the board, the board speaks for the board, right? Which is all of us, or you know, by, by at least a majority, right? That's what, that's what it really is, like we are a board of seven and so I just think that's an important piece, I don't really see it in here somewhere, so I don't know where it belongs, but it is like a, you know, I think it is an important governance to know that.
And we talk a lot about making that transition from I to we, right? We run as individuals, but then we're part of a governance team and we have to collaborately communicate that we message.
Maybe it was somewhere else, I thought it was somewhere where it's like talked about, I mean, it is, it is a little bit maybe devaluing of the individual voice, but like that's the point, right? Is that the limits of individual board members' authority and that sort of thing. I feel like in this conversation, this is an important thing to adopt as, you know, as part of governance norms that we all treat to abide by. I just, I just think that's an important concept and I don't really see it incorporating anywhere.
I think I saw another page later on, I read it earlier.
Is it? Okay, okay.
Protocols.
Yeah, we'll talk about some of those.
Teri, maybe when we bring this back, we can have copies of all of the board policies that are listed for review and then we can discuss at that point if we want to review this at a future board meeting to update those board policies.
Okay. All right. Any other changes or additions?
Did we agree to incorporate number eight? Ensure opportunities for the diverse range of views in the community to inform board deliberations.
This is, this is from, yes. Seven.
They're commonly found in governance handbooks.
So that's why I brought them.
Not pointed in any way.
I was making sure that, so we're quick, I guess, or maybe I'm unclear, eight and page eight and nine are already board policies that we've adopted. Page seven of the governance norms are things that are common in governance handbooks that you are suggesting for our consideration. So eight and nine are things that we've already adopted. Page seven is things that we can also put into the things that we've already adopted.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so when I say that I would like to try and incorporate number eight into what is on page number seven, is that right or not?
Yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely. I think that's really important too and I think it's beautifully written. Ensure opportunities for the diverse range of views in the community to inform board deliberation.
Okay.
All right.
Do you want to go to what's above on page eight?
Yes, 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 yes. So this, these are not norms, they're just agreements and so it says the board expects its members to work with each other and the superintendent to ensure that a high quality education is provided to each student. Each individual board member shall. And then it goes through one through eight.
And these were already adopted.
So I just wanted to have you browse those really quick so we could come to agreement on one through eight.
Sorry, just going back, so these are in the board bylaws, these are the same as in the board bylaws, right? Or no?
They're connected and they were agreed upon and maybe Tessie remembers when you created.
I think the last time we did this was about twenty thirteen, something about, right?
So it's quite a long time ago.
Okay. I'm just looking back and forth, it looks like they're the same.
Twenty seventeen?
So basically, so the governance standards on page six are the same as basically page eight and nine.
And sometimes you put them in a couple areas just for emphasis, but you do not have to have them in if you do not wish to.
Well, I think they're already in, they are already in terms of the governance standards, the bylaw that's included here, so unless we're talking about revising that bylaw, but I think it's pretty good, sensible stuff.
I agree, that could probably be removed, that's a tension.
Okay.
Are we in agreement?
I think I am in agreement, I just think some of this can be incorporated within the week two. The things that aren't on, like for example, like a few, like four, five. This is literally, yes, and like I can, I just feel like those need to be incorporated in with the rest of it.
In the governance.
In the governance, yeah.
And I can do that. I can do that. Which, five and seven?
Four, five, seven.
Four, five, seven and maybe eight?
Eight. And just make sure, keeping always on the very top of students.
Okay.
Now, I'm just, I guess I'm still a little confused as to why, what we're, what we're doing with these.
I think it'd be more clearer like when they're all together and then we can go through them and then kind of say like, okay, take this one out, add these words to it, but because they're kind of all in different places, it's hard because we're reading through it that way. So maybe on the next read, once she goes through it, it's erase all of them, then it'll be in easier read.
So the governance standards, like all of these are already on page six. The ones on, everything on page eight and the first half of page nine is already reflected on page six.
But the differences from what I see is the governance standards versus governance norms. They're not all the same. Is that correct?
Correct or my all? That was my understanding.
So are they, are they used for two different, two different purposes or I guess I'm just, it seems duplicative to me to have them in two places or to have a whole set of them here and then have to pick and choose some from here and put them into something else.
Could we call it maybe just one document that says governance standards and norms and then incorporate them all? Is that okay?
We could definitely do that.
Does everyone want an agreement on that one?
I would just ask, why would you have them separately? Is there like a functional or practical purpose?
Sometimes you just do it for emphasis, right? And so that would be the reason for that, but what I can do is integrate them again and go over and, you know, take out the ones you don't want and.
Maybe just simplifying it.
Yes.
Okay. Where are we at now? Questions? We'll just go through all my time once it's all integrated together. All right, governance team protocols?
Okay, so these are the protocols that are usually in a handbook and I wanted to go over them. First of all, though, I wanted to have you look at your flow chart that you created on communication. I have that document on your table. I think it's really well written, I think it's easy to look at and understand, so if you'd like, I'd like to put this, add this to your governance handbook.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We go to communication, why do we have to copy board president? Speaking about the position, why does a trustee have to copy board president? Any to these things? Is there a reason for that? And is that best practice or is that a district that you've worked with and when was that protocol actually put in place? Yeah, this is, I'm wondering, have you seen, have you seen in other places and when was this protocol in our district put in place and then why does the trustee need to CC the board president? Those are my questions.
Okay. Sometimes you CC the board president just to keep them in the loop of communication so they know, you know, which, what board members are sending to the superintendent. But I think you created this recently with another facilitator, C S B A facilitator?
We did, actually, it was Nathaniel Browning while he was our board assistant and if I can kind of answer that. So I think it's even more important now because I work directly with superintendent to create the agenda for the board. So if there are emails and concerns that need to be agendized for the entire board, I won't know about them if I'm not being copied on them or whomever is president will not know about them if we're not being copied on them.
And then also, does this, if we have concerns like that, does this put us in an issue of possible brown ass situations?
If it's like you're on something, you look at it and it goes out, can that put us in a precarious situation by everything having to CCC the board president? Not necessarily you, but the board president.
Yeah, no, I understand, I know it's not picking on me. Yeah, no, I understand. Yes, absolutely, I think that you do have to watch for that, if that's the case. And this document was created in January twenty twenty, so this is something that we need to talk about and I know during our Harvard training, we talked a little bit about the communications as well. And I think that we need to have some deep conversations about how we handle communications, how we reach out to staff, how we make sure each board member has equal information to make decisions. I think we as a board need to have those discussions about how do we make sure that happens.
So the board president CCC was done, put a protocol in place by our board when we, in January twenty twenty.
Yes.
Actually, this is the third generation.
This, this, it's been, this was just our last generation, right?
But they're pretty much the same.
Yeah. Any other questions, member Garcia?
I think it would be helpful to at some point, I don't know if it's right now. To add context as to why this exists in the first place, because it is the third sort of version of it, but it predates almost all of us, so I think it would be helpful to add clarity and provide maybe more context to the responses for board member roads.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I don't know if now is the time, but we can definitely do that. Yeah, absolutely.
A foreign request that we come back.
You got it.
I don't know, it's, this is.
Are you saying that to the board or just to the board? I'm just playing, I'm just messing with you. All right, yep, absolutely, I gotcha.
Maybe we can come back at the same time because we're going to incorporate it in the handbook, but if there's, I don't know, maybe if there's anything that we need to talk about, we should just talk about it within this communication protocol, are there like, or?
I can be a bit, a bit general and broad and then have a deeper discussion, board members. I know that the first iteration happened soon after my arrival when my sense of the organization was that board members were reaching out directly to staff members and staff felt sometimes confused, sometimes obligated, sometimes challenged in terms of the communications, the direct communications that many of them were receiving directly from board members and felt and asked that we And felt and asked that we try to establish something like this so that we could bring into more balance what, what, what this document is about, right? The difference between management and vision setting and direction setting. And so I, I think it does go to the heart of what you're talking about today. And we, at that time, felt that it was important enough to at least set some parameters for how we would begin the process of creating that healthier balance that is contained in this document. Not in this document, but in this effort around governance. And so, um, that's kind of, I think, generally what, what, what was the impetus for this.
I've heard that before. I was actually just, the, the questioning was specifically around, um, the board president piece of like having to CC the board president piece. I understand the protocols of when you're asking questions and you go, hey, superintendents, an email quick, this and that and the other. But then would that not give the board president more information than the board members? That you're talking about, you said everybody has to get the same information. Would that not give intrinsically the board president with the most information out of everyone constantly?
But it's the board president's responsibility to make sure that the board is aware and it is agendized.
Right.
And, and in terms of like things like media inquiries, the board president is the face of the board. And so I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anne, I believe there is a board policy based on media inquiries, where board members are not to speak to media. The, the board president is the face of the, the board to speak with media regarding board relations.
Member Rhodes, there is a separate board bylaw on the president's roles, 9121 as well for reference.
The 9121?
Yes.
I do not know that one and I still look into it. But, um, so these are just real questions that I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, good questions.
It's just like, well, okay, tell me why we CC the board president?
Yep.
Tell me what is the function? Tell us, tell me why, um, what is our, um, how can we, are we gonna, are we heading for also brown act things? And, and I can see that there could be issue with that around this. So how are we, how are we making sure that we don't have that? So these are, these are real questions that I'm asking as a new board member. But then also to I need that get full clarity on, on why we decided to put this in the document. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's fair questions. And when we dive in deeper with the communications protocol, I think we all hopefully have some suggestions. And, and one of the suggestions that came out of like the Harvard Academy was sending out a weekly email of all requests of every single board member to all board members and the information that was sent out. So we are all on the same page. Yeah, every single request.
I think there, if I could just say also, I mean, I don't, I don't know if efficiency is the best term, Member Rhodes, but I do, I, I think I am expected to work most closely with the board president. And it is helpful when our board president has context about the topics that board members are inquiring about and wanting deeper discussions about. Again, I don't know if efficiency is the best adjective for it, but it does help to have direct communications with our board president, whoever that person might be. As opposed to trying to manage potentially seven different topics, if you will, that again are, for those that are part of effective governance, I'll say. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of other topics that may not go to the heart of governance that I always interact with different board members on. But for those that I think are part of our governance journey, I, I think that it, it is helpful for me to be able to have those discussions and that the board president is aware because there's some agreement and commitment to follow whatever iteration we're on. And we happen to be on the third iteration, so.
Can I add just on an opposite side of that? If, say, a board member were to speak with, again, two other board members and not the president about an issue, that's creating another flip of the coin where the president now is not involved in that communication. And we would be violating Brown Act at that point. Is that how I understand it correctly? If we're not looping you in as that first in person?
I think it, it just, no, I think it just depends on how many board members you've spoken to.
Yeah, I was thinking about what that thread might look like. If that you, if you email CC the board president, board president, CC somebody else, or you talk to somebody else and then you don't, then like the number of people you've talked to actually just.
I think maybe the difference in this is like requests. So these are requests that are being sent and then CCing the board president. But the way that you're going to violate the Brown Act is if you're speaking about a vote, how you're going to vote. And then you're having a discussion about that. That's how you're going to violate that.
Decision making.
Yes, all the decision, not, not a request.
Anne, are we on the right track on that?
Yes. Very good.
I always like to chat.
Yes. I'm sure I would have got a text message. Do you have any, any other?
No, I think, you know, it might be helpful. I know that the, you know, CSBA has training on the role of a board president that you've done. I know Daryl has probably done, but if there's some, if there's, if there's things from there that we could take as learnings to better understand why, because I do think it's important. And it does seem like, um, a little bit like, oh, you know, it's too many people involved or, um, you know, it's just an inquiry I have. But I, I, you know, the longer I'm here, the more I like respect the protocol. Because I feel like, you know, like it, you know, you can go haywire when it's not followed. And then, you know, when you do follow it, you see, okay. You know, it's just, it's just, it's a matter of like the smooth running machine, right? Like, so everybody knows what to expect. Like, and, and I would say, you know, if you have issues, like, you know, with, with the, the board president pretty much setting the agenda and being able to work with, directly with the superintendent on your issues. And try to keep in mind that the board president should be your, one of the conduits, you know? Like, if you need to talk to somebody else on the board, you should try to loop in the board president. And if it's, if you've already talked to other board members or whatever, and, you know, then there's, you know, I would maybe handle it differently and just say, you know, um, you know, I'm not CCing board president because, you know, I've had a discussion with two other board members or whatever. But I think in general, it's kind of just good to keep in mind, like, it's a good practice for these things, right?
Board policy 9121 to look at. I think that's sufficient for me right now.
Yeah.
And if I have any other questions, I'll make sure to ask them.
Okay, and maybe in a future governance training with Terry, we can have that discussion about the, the role of the president and the role of the board and the role of the superintendent. I think that we can dig a little bit deeper into that as well.
If, if the board so wills it, then I'm, I'm cool to sit in that meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
And I have lots of information I can bring you guys.
She's done Mig training. All right.
Okay, so now we're going to go through a few protocols, starting on the bottom of, uh, page nine. One of my other facilitators, uh, kind of defined protocols as the rules to monopoly, right? So if we were going to put a game of monopoly on a table and no one knew the rules, how would we play? So these are just kind of the way we do business. So the first one that we're going to talk about is self-monitoring. We will schedule workshops as needed to review governance team agreements and processes. And I think we touched on that a little bit. We touched on, like, you know, reviewing the governance handbook. So that's pretty straightforward. Any questions on that one? Okay. I'm now going to the top of page 10, uh, voting no. Each board member respects the right of other board members to vote no on an issue. As a courtesy to the team, a board member may explain the reasons for the no vote, either during deliberations or before casting the vote. Questions? No, okay. Visiting schools. Can you describe the way it's done in Sacramento City School District? If a board member would like to visit a school?
I think that we all may do something a little bit differently. It should probably go through the district office, correct superintendent? Or how?
Yeah, I mean, I would refer back to the, again, this iteration of the board communication protocol because it is one of them. When there is a request of a principal that requires his or her time, it does spell out what, again, what the protocol calls for, so.
Oh, yeah.
Your number four.
And I think that's fair. Sending an email to the principal, copy the superintendent and the deputy superintendent so that way they know. And that should probably take in place in any school, um, visit, yeah.
One, two, three, four.
If a request comes to you from a principal, then we send the email.
I think the superintendent and the deputy superintendent should know that you'll be visiting the school site. I know, because I can play devil's advocate in this one because I, I know a lot of my principals, you know, for a very long time. I'm just, you know, driving by and stopping and saying hi. I think maybe that's different than stopping by and having a conversation about what's happening at the school. Yeah, totally, I think that's totally different than just.
And I think we were very intentional, board members. This is where there's a request of a principal that's, that requires time or resources, human or capital. Where, where you're making a request that's going to, uh, take his or her time to respond to such request. That's what this is focused on. I think if the question is specifically visiting a school, if you're just, if, if there are no requests that are being made as part of that, then, and that, you know, I know many of you do that all the time. But this is where there's an actual request that's taking, again, time, resources from that individual site meter. That, we were, we were very intentional because we, we, we know that many of you have very strong relationships with our school communities. And you want to stop and you want to say hello, those kinds of things. But this one is where a request is going to take time.
And believe me, when we came up with this protocol, there was a lot of discussion regarding this. Because a lot of us do have relationships. It was like back and forth of like, well, what about this? And what about this situation? What about that situation? So I think the superintendent, said it beautifully, if, if it takes away time from a principal, then it needs, the superintendent and the deputy superintendent need to know.
I think that's, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Oh, just going to say this, I think that's a kind of a powerful message that we all need to like internalize because the, the bottom line here is like, as board members, we don't supervise folks directly. And that's true for principals and also for district staff. So if we're, if, if we're making requests of them that take their time and resources, then that's actually directing their work, which is not our job, right? So that's, I think that's where it does need the, um, the, you know, at least the respect of the looping in of, of the people who are the, you know, responsible for, for directly managing their work.
And I also think that it, um, because of the times that we're currently in, it's not just visiting a school. It's also phone calls or Zoom calls that should be incorporated in that if it's taking time of work that needs, that's happening. If that makes sense.
And just, so I have a clarifying question. The verbiage under visiting schools, would you like to, um, add that as an addition or just keep what's on the flow chart? Do you think you need further clarification or do you think the floor, flow chart covers it?
Um, I think it should be added.
Okay.
It's board, what, I'm at the will of the board. Your thoughts?
I think that, well, in the, in the paperwork here, it does say, um, board members will also be cautious about encroaching on the learning environment. To assist in this matter, the superintendent wants sure that, uh, principals and teachers know that, uh, teachers are not. So I think that the, it does touch on it. And this, and this, this one goes saying like, hey, if you're going to take time away from a principal, if you're asking a principal or whatever, I want you to, well, show me bungalows outside during the school day. They might not actually have time for that. And so if you, if you pull up on them, they pull up on me. You pull up on them and you say, and you say like, hey, I want to see this bungalow at this point in time.
Yeah.
You, you, that should be common courtesy that a board member wouldn't do that out of the respect for the position of what the principal is doing at the school site. But having that in this paperwork is, is helpful. I think that, um, I think, I think it was good in it, however you want to add that into this. I think they're complementary of each other.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And I think that going down to the next one, handling concerns from the public and staff, I think it's covered in your flow chart. So I don't know that we, um, need to add all this, um, paragraph. But I just wanted to check with you and make sure. Okay. Mm-hmm. And the one question I had, it's on sentence one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And it says, members are to contact the superintendent or cabinet members. So, um, a lot of districts have taken out cabinet members because they want the, um, board members to just, uh, contact the superintendent.
Yeah, that contradicts the flow chart. So maybe taking that out.
Okay, we'll strike cabinet members. All right. Um, going down to the next one, um, and, and, I mean, I'm just saying this flow chart is really good. It covers a lot of this. Individual board member requests for information. In some districts, um, board members, uh, ask for a lot of information. And, um, staff time is money and resources. So it's really talking about if it, uh, sometimes they put a time limit. Like if it takes staff more than half an hour to gather the information, it has to come on the agenda for the board as an information item. And then if all seven of you agree that you want that information, then it goes forward. So.
I'm sorry to do this, but can we go back up to handling concerns of the public and staff?
Yes.
The second, the second sentence is kind of confusing to me. Board members will make sure they understand the appropriate order of whom to contact. And then goes the teacher, then principal. To me, that reads like the board member would do that. And maybe I'm just reading it incorrectly and.
And so I think that that's referring to the chain of command that, um, if a parent contacts you,
Yeah.
that you're referring them to the chain of command. If a parent has a problem with the teacher, they would contact that teacher first and then go up the chain of command.
Okay, yeah, it's just not kind of written like that, so.
Okay, I'm going to put a, let me put a mark to.
Did anybody, did it, am I the only one that?
It's better to be clear with what you're asking.
I can put chain of command in there.
Of having, and maybe saying like, having the community member follow the chain of command.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, that's, that's what I do. If like someone calls me and I ask them like, what steps have you taken? And then make sure that they've gone through the appropriate steps. Because sometimes our community, they like, just like to reach right out to us and ask us. So, um, what to, we're here to help, but making sure they're following a chain of command. I guess that was just kind of confusing me. Sorry to bring you back up to that one.
No, 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 no. Sorry.
I had another, I had another point on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just reading, it's the first sentence after the semicolon. Then we will direct that person to the person in the district most appropriate. That's not how we do it here. We either, um, direct them to constituent services or to the superintendent.
Okay, so, right, yeah.
Yeah, we're not.
Yeah, right.
We are not making a determination about which staff person.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it can be constituent services and/or?
Superintendent.
Superintendent. Superintendent. Unless it follows this board protocol. Because if it's like a complaint about staffing programs, facilities, and it says reaching out to superintendent and copying the board president.
We can, we can just take out that piece, too.
Keep our protocol.
Mm-hmm, and then just go down to the chain of command piece?
Oh, yeah, you can take out, maybe after, after the semicolon?
Yeah.
The rest of it? Yeah, that's fine, because it is addressed in the communication protocol.
Perfect, thank you for catching that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry, now that's the next one.
No problem, no problem. Any other on handling concerns? I probably went over that too fast. So going down to individual board member requests for information, you do have that on your flow chart. But in some districts, it's been quite a problem. And so that's why I included it.
This is for individual board member request information, yeah.
And staff members.
Yeah, well, I was reading that whole sentence. Individual board members would self, will self-monitor to ensure one person's request for information does not divert an inappropriate amount of time from staff members' efforts to achieve district goals.
Do you want to strike that whole, that whole piece?
I think maybe it just needs to be reworded.
Okay. What would?
Maybe individual board members will follow the protocol, communication protocol?
Okay, follow.
Communication.
To ensure one person's request. Maybe that's, is that okay with the board of changing it that way? Just changing it to communication protocol?
I, I think it's a little bit, I think it's trying to get at something a little bit different.
Yeah, what, what do you think? I remember.
The, the self-monitoring, it's really about how much time and resources are you, or is that one person taking? So regardless of whether they follow the protocol, if the, you know, if the, if the analysis is like a big, a big effort.
Sometimes it's described as good to know and need to know. You know, what do you need to know? And so.
So this brings me back to my request about like having, like a weekly email and a board communication of all requests sent out to the entire board. Maybe this is an appropriate time to have that conversation. Were you all, was it just to my group or did we? Was everybody, sorry, we were putting certain groups, we had conversations in groups. Was everyone part of that conversation?
No, but I think it's a good idea, because I don't, I mean, obviously, we have different districts. But again, we always go back to, we're overseeing everything in our community. So it's important to me to know what's going on and remember what, never see it, just to know. Need to know.
Yeah, I, I guess for me, like, I always viewed it as like, you know, my area is completely different from your area. And there may be problems or ideas that arise from your area. They could benefit our entire district, not just one area. And so that, that was kind of my thinking on it. Is there, what does everyone else think?
I think it was presented to us, I think, Member Garcia and I, as a best practice in our initial, like, CSBA training when we, when we-
Oh, was it?
Yeah, yeah, I, I like that idea.
I like it, too. I think it has to come in, I'm just wondering, like, the, how we receive the information? Is it like themes? Like, these are sort of some, like, you know?
Bullets?
Maybe a little bit more than bullets, but not like super specific, because I think that's going to be very time-consuming.
Yeah, it's true. Do you want to kind of, because you and staff would be the one that would have to put this together? So do you want to talk about what the capabilities would be of staff to be able to put something like that together?
Yeah, I, I think we'd have to come up with an efficient manner to do it. And then ensure that we have a process also by which we're able to assess and then determine what information is appropriate to share with the rest of the board that a particular board member is asking. Certainly, I think our goal, and I'll look to Ms. Vigil, our goal should be that information that's requested, as, as Member Murawski was mentioning, is because there, there is an element that applies to district initiatives as, as a whole. As, you know, as a balanced approach, that doesn't have specific requests that the majority are for just your trustee area, if you will, I guess, right? I think that's what we have to try to continue to just manage, is that, that information requests are because we are trying to advance district initiatives. And certainly, I, I expect from each of you requests that are appropriate or applicable to your trustee area. But hopefully, those are fewer than those that are applicable to advancing district initiatives that we discuss as, as a board as well.
Yeah.
So we'd have to figure out how to, how to, how to monitor and track that. But we will, we will look into it.
Have we won an agreement with that? Member Maraski?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, maybe Superintendent and you as board president can just circle back on that and assess whether, whether you think it's
Doable.
worthwhile, given the cost in staff time. I would say like, you know, anything related to individual constituents, situations, et cetera, would not be, you know, shared with the rest of the board and that sort of thing, so. Yeah, I just don't want to overburden.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll check with you on that, on that one.
All right. I did want to add on that paragraph, the second, where it says, "An individual board member will work to let the superintendent and staff members know." I think and staff members should be removed, because we just are making again the request to superintendent.
Got it, good catch.
Yeah, and are you, I don't know, Superintendent or President Pritchett, are you, are you both comfortable with this? If Superintendent believes the board member's request requires considerable effort, the decision to proceed will go to the full board? Or is that a, a decision that the board president should make?
Wait, what part, I'm sorry, are you reading the last sentence?
Sorry, the last.
Oh, okay.
And that's what I was talking about, like, if something's gonna take a lot of time to gather.
I, I think that it does need to be agendized at that point. Is that, that we would all get that same information?
Yeah, are we still talking about the same timeline? Just Terry mentioned 30 minutes or more? Is that like the trigger or?
Oh, maybe we should put that in there.
Considerable effort.
Considerable effort, okay. Yeah, it already says considerable effort, but do you want to change it? What, what was your recommendation?
No, I'm just mentioning that Terry mentioned a specific sort of time.
Takes more than 30 minutes.
I don't know what consider, I mean, I feel like a lot of these terms can be relative. So I don't, I don't know what a considerable effort would mean.
So maybe it could be spelled out of like?
I don't know.
Well, Superintendent, for when we have questions about anything usually, what, what is considered, what does it, I would imagine, I would imagine like getting information, writing back to a board member, it's more than 30 minutes. I would think on anything usually, yeah. So I just wanted to hear from you.
Yeah, I, I would say that aside from time, or more important than time, is whether the request is going to require new work. Especially cross-functional new work, right? That's going to require lots of bodies to come in to respond to something that is not happening or that you're asking that it, that it start to happen. That, that is how I would define more, what would take considerable work. And, and I think that if you're in agreement, that we, we, we have some, some parameter around not just request for information about, or that we have parameters about request for information that require a new effort or new body of work. Or request that new bodies of work be initiated as, as a request from an individual board member. I think those are things that we have to agree would automatically come back to the board as a whole.
Okay, so, so that's, that's a good clarification. And I, I think that if we had something like that in it, because I can imagine, I just, I just imagine myself writing back emails and finding information to constituents, right? Sometimes they'll ask a question, I, maybe I don't have to answer right there. I go find the information, I get back to the individual. That, that could take more than 30 minutes of my time, right? And as the superintendent is working and helping run the district and running the district, you, you're gonna have to say, if you get a, you get something from us, you might send it somewhere, you might continue to work, you might come back to it the next day. It still takes more than 30 minutes, I would think, I'm in there seven, there's seven people. So I think that engaging what he thinks is considerable. And then I like the, the conversation about the new work, bodies of work, or I think that should be placed in there.
Okay.
Maybe it's just me. Members will self-monitor to ensure one person's request for information does not divert an inappropriate amount of time from staff member efforts to achieve district goals. I mean, it's wordy.
I think he's just specifying what that means.
So if the superintendent thinks that your request requires considerable effort, this decision to proceed will go to the full board?
I think, I think Superintendent, what you're saying is if, if it, if it requires producing a new body of work, and I forgot the last one you said.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, I can't think right now of a case study. Maybe one of you can help me if you think of one as I, as I'm describing it. But if you were to receive some kind of inquiry from a constituent, and I come back and say, in fact, we're not able to do that, or we're not currently doing that, that a request from a board member to say, well, I'd like you to start doing that, you know, when, that, that would initiate a new body of work that would take a lot of consideration. That we agree that that kind of request, if you will, would take, would take considerable effort in that it would take a lot of time, of course, but it would, it would require us to do something that is new. And if seven board members are doing that consistently, then I think we have to agree to a norm that new bodies of work, new efforts would, would, would have to come back to, to the board as a whole.
Some of the things that come in mind when you say that are like, things like a program that you want to start. Or a new facility or a new playground. New blacktop, things of that nature that were, it would take a considerable amount of work, because it would have to be evaluations done, and it would, budgets would have to be done. Like, it would take several bodies in that sense. And I'm sure that's just a small, like, explanation, but those are the kind of things that were coming to my mind.
Yeah, or an analysis.
Yes, yeah.
Something that's not readily available.
Yeah.
An, an effort that's required. If it can't be like easily pulled, but it's actually, yeah.
Yeah, I can think of, and I know that, that maybe our community may be intrigued by this, but I know there was a case study during our Harvard Governance Training. If you remember, one of the caselets was, you know, where one board member just kept asking for more and more information, more and more disaggregated information. And I think that would be an example. Now, none of you have done that, but that would be an example of where at some point we'd say, you know what? It's probably better to tie those requests to something that we may want to talk about that is triggering the request in the first place. You know, we, we need to do a better job of serving our students who are facing similar hardships or circumstances, as opposed to trying to just respond to the board member who's making those requests.
Okay. And I'll integrate that language in here, and then you guys can review it. And, but that's a great example. Okay. All right, so moving down to individual board member requests for action. This is really straightforward. It comes straight from BB 9200. Just talking about the authority rests with the whole board.
With the majority.
With the majority, yes, sorry. Any questions on that one? Okay. Okay. The next one is request for board meeting agenda information. These are just questions that you ask before the meetings. And it just gives a time when they need to be submitted. You might already have that, but this just delineates. I know your board meetings are Thursdays, so when is the time cut off for, for questions? So staff has time to get you the information before the meetings?
Well, and this is something that also Terry, that I'd like to work on in a future board governance training of maybe creating a, a protocol or a form for board agenda item requests.
I saw in Harvard, they had, talking about best practices, and when any board member, I forgot the school district, but school, they had a day or where board members can actually come and ask questions, specific questions that they're going to be asking ahead of time to have that conversation. They had questions there and/or submit something so they can get, so staff is aware, they can ask the question in depth. Nobody is, you know, we don't want staff up there and it to be like a gotcha moment. We want them to actually be able to answer the questions in depth for the board and the community at large. So we, it's never a gotcha moment, but it put in systems in place to where we have those strong dialogues. And then that staff members can come back and still answer our questions, if we still ask the questions. But staff members are very aware to go to, answer them in depth for ourselves and our community members. And if we don't have something like that now, it'd be really nice to have some form of something like that, so that we can make sure that we're like serving our community well with answering those questions.
Yeah, absolutely, I totally agree. We should be asking and finding out information prior to board meetings. Obviously, there's gonna be things that arise at board meetings during presentations. And, and that might also limit the amount of questions that would take place at board meetings as well. Much like our two buys, but, but, but something on a regular basis, that's what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that this is, this is fine for, for some items. I think maybe that's a deeper conversation about board meetings themselves, because sometimes if, if most of the bulk of the information is, is in a presentation that's not available before the meeting, there's not, we can't ask questions about that.
Yeah.
Very true.
So I, I would say, you know, this would apply to, you know, when there is like a report or an executive summary or something available. That is a reason, or the budget, you know, something that we can review. I think that's, that's reasonable. And I don't know if Superintendent, President Pritchett, if you think nine, nine o'clock the prior day is, is a good, it seems fine to me. We don't have a time specified that I, that I'm aware of.
No, no, and certainly I want to be the first to also say that we have improvements that we, that we have to make as well. Member Murawski, and I, I don't want to be hard and fast for a nine o'clock time. At times, we are still finalizing, and you don't have access to PowerPoint presentations. So I, I can't think of an instance over the course of the past four-plus years where I felt that any board member had sent questions or untimely questions based on when we have shared information with you. I know that we have tried our best to be proactive through two buys, so that you don't feel that you can't frame questions until you get a PowerPoint presentation. And I think that I'd rather continue on that path of just assuming that, given our, the lean organization that we are, that we work with one another, so that when you know that it's an important topic, we provide the opportunity for two buys that seem a little bit independent of when you have a PowerPoint presentation to frame your questions. So if maybe Ms. Vigil can instead- So if maybe Ms. Vigil couldn't instead incorporate that we will continue to work together and remain committed so that you're asking me, or you're requesting a two buy, given the complexity of a topic, if you will, then I think it would be appropriate to say that between the two buy and the board meeting, we should, we should have some questions from you.
Maybe it should just be changed to like, to a reasonable time.
Yeah.
And not subject, not, well, maybe just change to a reasonable time. And just leave it, leave it at that, is everyone okay with that?
It says if possible. It says if possible.
Yeah.
Okay, we can, we can take out that time.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. The next one I don't, I don't really agree with. I think it's addressed on your flow chart. The superintendent would spend a lot of time on this one. So I think this is, this would take a lot of time. So I don't, I wanted to get your take on it.
Go ahead.
I do think this is an item that, again, goes back to circling the board. I think our city council members, our mayor, I think, in our own city, there are a lot of things that are going on, and we all hear different things. I think it's really important if there's something going on that would be beneficial for our board to know. I mean, I think it should be shared with, either the superintendent, if he feels it's appropriate to share with the board. I mean, it's, knowledge is power for all of us to know what's going on.
Okay, so maybe like just up the parameters of it, if it's, you know, not just every little dealing with, but if it's something important that would, you know, okay.
Do we think that the superintendent needs, maybe I read this one, that he would have to inform us? Yeah, that's how I'm reading it, that he would have to inform us. I think that that's, that's part of his job. So does he need to inform us every time that he reaches out to a government official? That's probably on a daily basis, superintendent, with all of your calls with SCOE and other superintendents throughout the district and CDTH, do we?
Agree, not the superintendent.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, maybe it needs to be, I don't know, does it mean how many, like, it's how you're, go ahead.
I think there, I'm just processing what you're saying. I think there is an opportunity to have a two-way street. I think not only like big issues that could impact one way or another to the district, but vice versa too, right? So I think it, I think we should have it where the superintendent can share with us, you know, big, again, big efforts by the city.
Like reasonable.
Yeah, not, not little things, but they're just like impactful. Things, efforts for our district and our, and our students. I put big ticket, but I'll get better later. It's just a reminder.
Like you said, vice versa.
Yeah. I'm thinking about, you know, after-school programs. I'm thinking about, you know, the Wi-Fi partnership. I'm thinking about, you know, just, there's just so much, right? And I think moving forward, both the district and cities, counties, and they have a lot of resources. So partnering, potential future opportunities to partner on bringing our one-time limited resources together to have a wider impact on our community. I think those are the kinds of things that we'd want to know about and share with the superintendent about opportunities as well.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Maybe that could be in the form of a B C or something.
I also wrote, yeah, also wrote nonroutine.
Okay.
There's a lot of routine communication.
Nonroutine.
But if, yeah, I agree with what Second Member Garcia.
And the next one is communication methods. And it's just, board members let the superintendent know what's the most effective one-on-one method of communication for them, text, cell, or email. Just a real, real quick. So going to page 11, answer unknown. When a board member or the superintendent does not have the answer to a specific operational matter when asked by a constituent, a response will be given in a timely manner by appropriate individuals. Board members are asked to contact the superintendent when this occurs. It's kind of covered in your flow chart, so I don't know if we need to be redundant and put it here.
I don't think it hurts for us to be set here, but. Many others? No? Reports, reports scentle?
Yeah, reports on progress made to address evaluation goals, priorities, and recommendation. Seek timely conclusion of items of concern to the board. So this is just regarding, you know, at the beginning of the year, if you set goals for the superintendent, it's just kind of letting the board know throughout the year of the success indicators, or maybe why it's not being completed. You know, we just went through 18 months of COVID, there was a lot of things that were postponed. But it's just letting you guys know the progress on goal set.
Maybe adding something in there, like creating a timeline.
Okay.
These are protocols for the board.
Evaluation goals, I guess that would be for board and superintendent.
Well, these, I'm just saying, like, this, this whole thing is a list of protocols for the board, right?
Yes.
Governance team protocols.
Yes. Well, the superintendent is part of the governance.
Okay, so what is it actually saying? I'm a little confused by that, it's just not a complete sentence, I guess.
Okay, I can change the language to make it reflect.
Like, are we making a promise to do this? I agree with this.
I just. And I think it's kind of a, just, and I can reword it, just to let you guys know the progress toward goals during the year.
So is it like the superintendent shall, or like?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll put that, that's good. Shall. Okay?
Okay, just joint suggestions. I have a question about this, would this superintendent, would this be a correct way of doing it? Would it be going through constituent services? Or is that only for plain process?
I'm trying to reconcile this one, one, because I think we spoke about it a few minutes ago in terms of that last sentence in particular, not just an operational matter, but a new matter, a new effort. And board members, I think, should be aware of requests that are being made. That was the committee that I was trying to respond to as well. I think this is not so much constituent services because it's related to operational matters. And I think that board members, I feel that all of you have managed this very well in terms of constituent inquiries related to open enrollment, processes, appeals, questions that you might have. They are not coming at a rate, in my opinion, where I think we need to shift them away from my, from the protocol as it stands today. And we should probably revisit that if that were to change, but I think for the moment, they're manageable. I can think of other cases where we've received the same message signed by different constituents, requesting that we work on something or towards something. I think those internally, we do go through constituent services so that we can respond to 20 constituents that have the same concern for example. But for those that are unique, I think the current communication protocol speaks to those.
Okay. Board meeting organization. And this is just talking about, you know, maybe adding workshops or making sure that the meetings are needed to support the board discussions and decision-making on complex issues. I think maybe you have this covered in your flow chart, but I just wanted to get your opinion on that.
You know, I kind of want to dig into this a little bit.
Okay.
And just like the first partial sentence on there, about board meeting timing. I speak with many of you and hear that they fill our meetings too long. But then we have additional meetings, and then I hear we have too many meetings. So I want to have this discussion here and now to know, like, what is sufficient for our board? What do we expect of our board? And what do we all agree on? And then also, you know, I reflected a lot on, you know what, from the Harvard Academy. And I know, I think I heard you mention this as well, about like, in talking to other boards, to other boards across the United States, about how long their board meetings go, how long each board member gets to talk, all of that. I think we need to have a discussion about, we know, there's nights where our board meetings go really long. And I couldn't believe we were talking about budget stuff at 11 o'clock. After 10 o'clock, I'm just seriously, like, I know I need to pay attention, I'm really struggling to pay attention. I'm so exhausted. We all work, we all have been at work all day long, we're taking care of families. And I think we need to have this discussion with all of us, to know what's sufficient. If you think our board meetings are too long. Because it's going to take staff time. Because that staff member might be presenting on Thursday night, but then we ask them to come back on Tuesday night to present again, and that's more staff time. Go ahead, Member Villa.
I agree with that, I also think it takes away from our community input. Not a lot of folks can stay up until 11:30 at night to listen to our conversations that go on. I agree, I think they go way too long. I know we have a lot of information, of course, this last year has been daunting. However, I did bring that, there was a few board members in different areas that indicated that they had board member time limits. And you needed to provide your information in that timeframe. And if you were unable to do that, then you either had to have a vote from other board members to allow you to continue for another two to five, or you have to wait and then get that information submitted later. And I know that's hard because we all have a lot of information that we want to ask, but we have time limits for a lot of our, you know, community that calls in. We should also adhere to time limits. That's my opinion.
When, something to also keep in mind, we do have a student board member on our board. And when our meetings go till 1:00 a.m., that student has to get up the next morning and go to school and pay attention to their academics, which is tough. So I kind of like to just hear from everyone of like, what do we expect of this board? Go ahead, Member Villa, you don't even have to raise it. Go ahead, I want to hear it.
I must my mic on. Yeah, after 10:30, because you know the bylaws say, 10:30, we can take one vote to extend. But my biggest concern with, I mean, if we could agendize in a way that keeps us, that keeps it short, then we might be able to succeed. I know we have questions, I haven't heard a bad question yet. So we're asking pointed questions, but, I mean, we, I don't even think that we're making proper decisions after 10:30. You know what I mean? And I'm sitting there going, I can't even vote on this because it doesn't feel like I am even awake enough to pay attention to what we're doing. So when 10:30 comes up and you guys take a vote and I do this, I really mean that. So, you know, as far as I know, 10:30 maybe with one extension, 11:30 might be okay. But, I mean, going into 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning, I'm like ready to blast out of here. So, and I know I'm not making good decisions, you know, I know I'm not comfortable with sitting here this late at night with poor Jacqueline and, you know, poor board member Shake and everybody who's online, who's been waiting. So, I mean, you know, we could even, to satisfy the community, put them, you know, in a position where we would hear them sooner, make sure that our agenda looks in a way that allows them to be heard. But, I mean, we all agree, every time that we take a vote to extend, everyone agrees. So like, there's no one dissenting but me. Which sounds like y'all still want to go to 2:00 in the morning on some occasions. And I just can't do that. You know what I mean? Because of the importance of what we're doing, the decisions that we're making, 11:30 is not rocking it. It's, you know, for me, it's problematic. But that's how I feel about it personally.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and sometimes it's dangerous leaving here early when you're that tired, right? And our staff, our staff that's running our meetings have to do the same, they still have to clean up, and then get out of here, they get out of here after us. And so I guess my question is, you know, we say, you know, we meet twice a month. We know we've been meeting much more than that because there's so much happening in our district right now. And so, Superintendent, if you want to weigh in, but I mean, I'm thinking, maybe it takes, that we commit to additional board meetings. Because we have, we have to get things done, we know that, we have. The reason why we vote to 2:30 in the morning is because there's stuff on the agenda that we absolutely have to get to.
But we owe it to our public to make sure that we're making decisions that are informed, yes, but that are also made, you know, from a, from more than a semi-conscious state. It just feels like we're, you know, I.
I'm right there with you, which is why I brought this up.
Right, so let's say you ask for extra meetings, you know what I mean? Then it comes into, how many meetings are we allowed to miss in the event that we cannot make those? I work emergency services, so sometimes you're going to catch me not here. And then there's penalization for not making the meetings. And, you know, we have more meetings, it's, it's just.
Catch 22?
Yeah, it is. I want to be awake when I make votes. When I vote on stuff, I want to be awake. And I also don't want to drive off the road on the way home. So I think in terms of safety for, you know, everyone here is that we really consider making the agenda and sticking to that agenda. And I know that some of our presentations are extremely long. The hour-long one we had the other night was like informative, but, you know, what can we do to?
It's usually our questions, really, that I think drive everything longer. And that's what, and then the amount of meetings we're having, you know, I've had people ask me, why do we have so many meetings? And I was like, well, that's like, at this point, asking that, why do we have a pandemic? It's because of the pandemic that we're having these meetings to be able to address issues that are going on with our district. So the meetings, the amount of meetings, I think, are due to the circumstances of the times we're living in. And, and I think that the length of our meetings are due to our questions, but a lot of times we have a lot of questions because we get the PowerPoint, the information the day of, or the day before, and so we actually have real questions about this topic. So I mean, I don't know the right answer, I know what the issues are, I just don't, I don't have an answer for them.
And public comment is not incorporated into the agenda times either. Superintendent, did you want to weigh in?
I wanted to just share very quickly that I've thought a lot about this issue. And I certainly agree with Member Rhodes's assessment. I think the, I was reminded the other day that last year we had an additional 20 meetings, workshops, than those that we had originally approved a year before when we approve our special, our board meeting calendar, if you will. And that is a lot. Hopefully, it's because of what we're going through right now and the judgment that we have, that we made over the course of the past year, that these were necessary and important. One thought is that we've never, we've never, we've never been able to operate the way that other high-performing, high-poverty school districts operate. And so you hear of them, and they seem unrealistic, and they seem untrue. Maybe the board could think about some kind of special committee, if you will, for a group of you to actually interact with. uh, peers from some of those districts. Uh, Long Beach, for example, has monthly meetings only.
Month to month?
Mm-hmm. They, uh, they have a very set time schedule. Uh, they end, uh, within a few hours as well. Um, we've never had something like that. And so for us, it feels like everything we try still hasn't, hasn't achieved anything close to being able to finish on time or finish before 11:30 or midnight. Um, maybe we can, uh, work with, uh, partners that were part of the Harvard training perhaps, uh, that have a different structure and just think about ways that we can make some improvements. But I, I, uh, I, I certainly can see, Member Phillips, the presentation on reopening was a lot of slides. Um, we tried to touch bases, uh, on as many aspects as I think our community has been asking questions about. Um, and, and again, we, uh, the staff are excited about presenting as well. So, uh, they, they want to provide as much information. It is our, our, it is the appropriate venue for us to share. But, uh, I've struggled with this as well because, uh, for, for, four-plus years, we, we, we've not been able to crack this one. And so, um, maybe we just need to hear how, how others actually do it, uh, in a way that we, we would want to happen, we would want to see happen here.
Yeah, and you know, we, we owe it to our staff to be alert and making a conscious decision, like you said, um, with the work that they put in. They pour their heart and soul into these presentations. We owe it to them. Um, yeah, I'd like to maybe work with the superintendent unseen, um, putting together that committee and having, um, a few of you meeting with other board, um, boards to bring back recommendations. Um, because I agree, and that's why I wanted to dig into it a little bit more. I totally agree.
I can get some information for you too.
Okay.
I can do a little reach out and, um, maybe do a quick, you know, analysis.
Yeah, maybe that's something that you can help guide. Yeah, that would be fantastic.
I'll do that.
Member Garcia?
Um, I fully support, um, you know, talking to others to find out how we can better streamline, um, our meetings, the number of meetings, the quality of our meetings. Um, certainly, um, doing that. And I think it goes back to like kind of the cycle that Board, um, Board Member Rhodes talked about, you know? Sometimes the information comes in late. I, I understand why sometimes the information comes in late because there's so many layers of, um, you know, um, I don't know, like conversations that need to happen. I mean, many of our, we've been in crisis mode in this district since I came on board. We were on the verge of going into receivership. So a lot of the work drives the meetings and it's just this cycle. And yeah, I'd much rather be at home sleeping. I mean, I'm a night owl, so I can stay up late, but I'd much rather not be here and be at home doing something else. But, um, but we need to like take a step back, I think, and, and really think about how we want to proceed because we've been in crisis, not only the fiscal crisis, but now the pandemic. But it's, it's not sustainable either, right? Um, just hearing in terms of, um, oh, I just wanted to make sure you were still with us.
Not that late. I'm like, oh no, did she just, she was serious.
But just, just making sure that we find that, um, balance, um, between like our time and then, um, having effective, efficient meetings and also being, uh, making sure that we provide the earliest possible time for our community to provide input. Um, so absolutely.
Yeah.
So I'll do a little research. You guys do a little research and we'll put it all together.
I'd be curious to know, like, how are other districts doing? I mean, those reopening presentations are long and they're very informative. Are they done at regular board meetings for other districts? Are they done in a town hall?
Yeah, sometimes they break them out.
Yeah, so maybe those are things that we'll find out and we can implement. I just, I appreciate the dialogue on this because it's been something that's been on my mind. And I know I talked to all of you guys. We're all kind of like on that same page of like, wow, these meetings go way too long.
I, we do need to come back to it.
I didn't talk to you about meeting. I think I've talked to you about how long meetings go. Okay, I'm going to call you tomorrow. We're going to have this discussion.
I am excited about the meetings and I am, so that's why I've been more quiet about it because I actually enjoy the meetings a lot. But, you know, thank you, Member Phillips, for throwing that out there.
So, so let me rephrase that. I don't reach out to board members and have conversations. They usually come to me and have conversations.
Just clarifying.
Yes, yes. All right.
So we'll do our research on that one and I'll bring it back. Uh, Brown Act, straightforward, continue observe all Brown Act. Uh, commendations and recognition, I don't know if you guys have a place on your agenda for that. But something I learned at Harvard was one of the districts has monthly rotations where they can, um, each board member can, you know, pick something they're proud of. And, um, so I don't know if you have a place on your agenda for that.
We have a board reporting period where they can.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't, I don't really think then you need that one. Um, so, and then the bottom one is too wordy. And I think it's covered by norms and it's just the agreement of agree to disagree, right? So, um, I don't know how you guys feel about that. But I think once I put the governance norms and standards together, that that would probably cover that. And it's just about respectful dialogue, split, you know, significant issues. Um, so I can, I can cover that in the other.
When I felt like just the first paragraph.
Okay, and I can, I can do that. I can do just the first paragraph.
And I think the last one on that page.
And that's where, that's where it was, what I was getting at. Oh, yeah, maybe the first and the last paragraph.
Okay. Cut out that middle piece. Perfect. Okay, now going over to, uh, page 12, uh, the agenda development. I think you have a good grasp on that. Um, does, is it usually the president and the vice president?
No, not any longer. It's now just the president and the superintendent.
Okay.
President and superintendent, all change that.
I'd also say, I believe it's, um, I don't know, is this a member of the government's team employee or citizen? Is that how, how it works? I don't know why employees called out then, if it's broadly available. But I think it is the right to request an item placed on the agenda. It's not a right to place items on the agenda.
Right.
Between the board members.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and is this, um, this section good with the board policy that we pass?
I'm going to ask Ms. Hill to reference the board policies and the bylaws that were recently, uh, that were recently updated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, anonymous information, um, I think that, uh, just referring people to the complaint procedure. But you are a big district, so you probably have one department that just kind of covers that.
Um, we have our constituents.
Yeah, so would that be under, under that?
Um, but this is.
Superintendent, like I sent everything through him. And then he figures out exactly where they need to go, which saves us from having to manage the district.
Okay. Just a question about that. I, I guess I don't understand the heading, anonymous information.
Um, sometimes people don't want to put their name to complaints. And I think that's what that's talking about. They're afraid, um.
For retaliation.
Yes.
So what is the, what is the norm or what is the norm actually saying that we should, or the protocol saying that we do? Request that person sharing information follow the.
Acceptable Sacramento City Uniformized District Complaint Procedure. Usually you have that on website.
Yeah, it's usually a uniform complaint, yeah, which they could fill out.
Okay.
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 All right, I don't know how that relates to anonymous complaints.
I think it has to do with the fact that if there's, um, an investigation or something, they might not actually be able to remain anonymous. Because our, I mean, where I work, our complaint process is like that. You can complain and it's supposed to be anonymous, but in the course of the investigation or whatever goes on, someone may deduce that it's you. So, I mean, that's kind of what I'm thinking. But.
Okay.
Well, depending on the.
Some people just put stuff together. They put two and two together. But I've never had anyone say, I would like to submit this information anonymously. But if they ever did, I'd follow the same path, the same path that we would follow. But I wouldn't be the person informing them that they might not be able to remain anonymous either.
And sometimes that happens as board members. I've had it happen to me a lot. A parent, you know, will say, hey, this is happening, but I don't want my name connected to it. So, you know, how do you handle that?
I think it's fair to say the acceptable, the word acceptable, because, which is in there. Um, because I have to think about like, what would be? I don't know, like some employee complaining about another employee with, you know, I'm trying to think of something like, something serious of gravity, like a firearm or, you know, something of that sense, where law enforcement would then have to be involved. And then there would be a total degree of anonymous, you know what I mean? That's kind of what I was thinking, like.
Kind of what Hillary Clinton was just talking about.
Yeah, exactly. Because then you put them two and two together, exactly, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Or child abuse.
Yeah. And so going down to the next one, the chain of command is just, um, that's pretty straightforward. Um, complaint and inquiry reporting. Um, so I think this is addressed on your flowchart, so I was gonna, um, scratch that. But I wanted to get your opinion on that.
Yeah, I think it's handled by.
Yeah, yeah.
I said so too. Uh, confidentiality is just, um, talking about confidential things need to stay confidential and it's important to the health of our organization. Um, you know, talking about the Brown Act again. Pretty serious.
Um, can we add HIPAA in there as well?
Okay, HIPAA, okay. For HIPAA and HIPAA? Okay, got it. For HIPAA and HIPAA, got it. Okay, um, personal problem solving. This is about, um, the relationship between board members. This just says that, hey, guys, we're going to fix our own relationships. Like the superintendent doesn't need to step into our relationships. Um, you know, if I have a, if board member A has a problem with board member B, guess what? We're going to go grab a coffee and talk about it and try to get it fixed. Or maybe the board president needs to step in in some situations. But that's what, um, that's regarding. It's just hard for a superintendent to have to step into relationships between board members. Because it never ends good for that superintendent.
And if that were his boss, not the other way.
Exactly. So, um, so that's what that one is about. Um, the last one on this page is pretty straightforward, personal or preferential treatment. We don't ask for anything special for our families or, um, for ourselves. Okay?
And 13 I think is important. I haven't seen this anywhere in your documentation. Is how do we orient, the orientation of board members.
So this just kind of goes through, uh, what documents that we're going to provide for them on their onboarding training. And maybe you have a process, but I just didn't see it.
No, the process was that binder that I made with the annual.
Yeah, I think that this, to have this process is, it will be good for many trustees that come in. Um, and as for us to continue to build on this because I U onboarding trustee is critical to the work that we do as a district. So I think starting this process is great and then being able to add on to it as we go. We build capacity is better.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that, uh, as we add on, we, uh, might contemplate having a workshop for all prospective trustees.
Yeah.
Before they run.
But who, but who would put that on?
But you know what? CSBA does it. CSBA, as a facilitator, I've done it before.
So you could put that on.
I remember when I was running for office, I came in set, I am on a board workshop, something to this, uh, and kind of heard about, uh, actually how it ran. We don't have a formal way to do that, but there's, there's ways for people to listen in. But maybe cool, as we build out, maybe not currently, but as we build out.
Yeah, I think that's a greater deal. And I've done that for districts before. And here's the deal, guys, sometimes when people really see what we do as representatives, they change their mind, you know, and ready for the board. So, um.
Then they find out how much you get paid.
Well, it's definitely not what you thought.
Can we add in there also review of the new board member, I don't even know what it's called, binder?
Okay.
Review, uh, board member binder. New, new board member, um, onboarding binder.
Okay.
I also want to add the, um, like professional development through CSBA.
Okay.
Um, it's, I feel like it's missing. It's reviewing a lot of CSBA, you know, uh, documentation, you know, government standards, et cetera.
Yeah.
But, um, they had often coincides with a conference. And I think that's, that is really helpful.
Okay.
Um, so.
Mig training is beyond that though.
Pardon?
Mig training is beyond the conference.
Beyond.
And I, I think mig training is also, uh, key to, um, providing, uh, good service.
I think mig training should be mandatory.
Well, I, I completed that last year and it was, um, it was, it was great. So, um, but yes, so it starts with the conference, which usually happens right after this one, the swearing in.
December 2nd.
And then the, the cross, the mig training.
Okay.
I will add. New board, the new board member orientation.
Yeah, new board member.
Yeah, that's the one day.
The new board members don't come on until after.
Always complained about that with the CSBA.
We still went before we were sworn in to the conference. Yeah, yeah. Like a week or two before. Yeah, yeah. But it's important.
Okay. But they know that they're elected at that point.
Yeah, it was after, it was after the election, yeah.
Board member election.
Yeah, like I, I didn't go my first year because I didn't know that it was, that I was eligible to attend until I actually started and then it hadn't passed. I wasn't able to go until the following year and had been on the board for a year at that point.
Yeah, so we have to be proactive. Our staff has to be proactive in reaching out.
Right. I'm so excited that our conference is going to be in person this year. Yay! That'll be awesome.
In San Diego.
Yeah, in San Diego, yes, yes. All right, so then, uh, going down to superintendent evaluation, just says you're going to do one every year and abide by the contract terms. Um, board meeting management, we understand and agree that board meetings are the meeting of the board in public, not open forum town halls, not saying that you don't have open forum town halls, but they're diff, they're different. Um, we'll keep in mind as we conduct our meetings, allowing the public to provide input at the time allotted to ensure that multiple voices of the community are heard. Um, so that's pretty straight, straightforward too. Is there a difference in, um, how you do it here in your district than as it's described here?
No, I think you'll find that, I do just want to point out, just, I'm probably preaching the required, but that is the reason why we don't respond usually to public comment because of that.
And it's a violation of the Brown Act sometimes because what they're talking about isn't.
It's not agendized, right? Exactly. So we can get ourselves in trouble. But I know it's, it's frustrating for community members because they ask the question they want to answer. But I know it's, it's frustrating for community members because they ask the question they want to answer, right? And then we all just kind of.
And it's really hard for new board members.
Yeah, I like, I like, okay.
But I do think it's good, you know, I know you've said that before, is maybe even just saying, reach out to your trustee.
Yeah.
I do think it's important still for you to email me your concern versus just, we don't get to respond.
Yep.
I'd rather give you the answer than you go to bed frustrated that evening.
Yeah, and, and when we had, you know, live board meetings, if, um, you know, we had someone that came up and had, you know, problems at a school side or problems within a community or, uh, and you knew that was your area that they were speaking about, I would just walk off the dais and get that person my business card and say, please reach out to me tomorrow so we can have a discussion. That way it's not a conversation from the dais.
And it's not left hanging, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we absolutely don't want to do that. But it does, I don't know if, um, everybody understands that it's not a meeting, a public meeting.
And then, so now going down to managing difficult topics, it's kind of related to that. Making sure that, um, the debate only happens, um, between board members. You know, my last few meetings have been very challenging that way. So, um, so that's what that one is about. And the chair, uh, may respond to public comment, but only if warranted. So, um, and, and some people scratch that. Some people leave it in. So whatever your preference is.
I think it's okay. How do you feel?
But only if, only if it's warranted. If it's a big.
Yeah, like if it, if it's gotten out of hand or, yeah.
Yeah, I just think we just need to be careful about that.
Yeah.
We should treat everyone fairly.
Always.
If somebody's like saying disinformation or like,
Right.
If it's something that we should address, then it's fine.
Okay, yes.
All right, and then.
It could be a response of saying like, reach out, please reach out to your board member. What was that, member Phillips?
So I'm just hoping that, you know, when we talk about this, I, I really keep thinking about the head nodding. We nod our heads a lot.
And that's important, right?
Yeah.
That's important, like to watch your manner. Because even have casual conversations with, um, you know, um, constituents in the grocery store and you're going like this and.
I think that's hard because I think when I'm really concentrating, like I find myself doing that of like, does it? But yeah.
So watch our body language.
You know, I, I don't know if you guys have ever done this, but, um, I know it was really helpful for me my first year on the board of, um, going back and rewatching board meetings and watching your mannerisms. Because I don't ever notice, but I talk a lot with my hands. And I've learned over the years of like, I remember my first year on the board of just like, you know.
Is she doing sign language?
It was bad. So I don't, like, you know, now I've, I've had to pick up tips and tricks of like holding a pen in my hand. Something of that sort. So yeah, I highly recommend doing that.
So we're at our last one. And it's just about board notification. The superintendent will inform the board of pertinent activities of the district. If it's likely to be in the newspaper, the board should know about it. The superintendent will use email and or text to communicate routine matters to the board on a regular basis. During crisis situations, the superintendent will send out an email alert and then attempt to reach board members via telephone, beginning with the board president. Is that how, how it is?
Superintendent, it's, it's not starting with the board president, usually with the board member that's affected that's in that area, correct?
In the trustee area.
I would say typically that's how we've managed it. We try to contact the board member that is.
Is in that area.
That represents the area where something has occurred or something, um, will likely occur.
And then would you reach out to the, all the board after that?
Via email. And usually he lets the board president know just in case there's media concerns.
Got it.
Or, I mean, a lot of times I'll call board members and I'll say, you know, before a B C goes out, I need you to know because it's in your area.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's it. The last page is the signature page and you do that at an open board meeting. Well, guys, I got my work cut out for me.
Yes, you do. We appreciate you.
But I think this is great work. I'm glad you had me back. I love working with you guys. Feels like family. So, um, I will get to work on this and, um, I'll be talking to Ann about some of the, uh, protocols and matching them with the board policies. So I'll get with you, Ann, before I send it off to the district. So, um, any other comments or questions or clarifications?
No, so thank you, Terry, for your commitment to our board and super happy to do this.
10:15.
I know. Before we adjourn, do we have our public comments back?
We have Mo Cashmary listed online.
Okay, thank you. Mo, go ahead. Mo, you are muted. Are you able to unmute yourself? Can you send one of us a text message if you can hear us to let us know what's happening on your end? No, okay. Sorry, Mo. Um, I don't know if it's on our end or, or in your end. We apologize, but, um, we, we will see you next Thursday. With that, can I get a motion to?
So moved.
And our student's not here, so I can't ask her. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.